St. Anne's Catholic Church. Everyone, if you'd please silence your phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city, Beaumont, Texas. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen. Allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Dureo. Councilmember Getz. Councilmember... Who was that? Turner, I'm sorry.
My feelings are hurt. How can you forget my name?
Councilmember Felschah absent. Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Neil absent.
All right, today there are two proclamations. Tina Broussard, the city clerk. I will announce your name so that you and your members can come to the podium, shake hands with the council afterwards. But at first, we have a proclamation acknowledging Mr. Norris Batiste Jr. as the first African American to serve as U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District.
Whereas Mr. Norris Batiste Jr. rendered exceptional service to the community at large during his tenure as U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District of Texas. And whereas in June 1994, Norris Batiste Jr. was nominated by President Bill Clinton as the U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District of Texas, confirmed by the United States Senate later that year. And whereas Mr. Batiste became the first African American to serve as U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District and only the second black individual to hold the title in the Lone Star State. He holds an associate's and bachelor's degree from Lamar University. Mr. Batiste is a longtime community leader, having served as the president of the Golden Triangle Coalition of Black Democrats, also serving as chair for the group's political action committee. A valued pariser of our Mother of Mercy Catholic Church, having served as the president of the parish council and on the parent-teacher organization of the church's school. Mr. Batiste served as the president for Ozan High School and lent his time and expertise to the L.L. Melton YMCA Board of Directors. A proud military veteran, Mr. Batiste served with the U.S. Army Signal Intelligence Service as a member of the 101... I'm sorry, 101st Airborne Division during the Vietnam War and went on to distinguish himself during his civilian career with Exon Gas Systems, Inc., where he oversaw the company's safety and environmental efforts and daily operation of hundreds of miles of pipeline activity. Now therefore, Roy West, mayor of the city of Beaumont, is very proud and honored to recognize on this 25th day of July 2023, Mr. Norris Batiste Jr. for his dedicated service as a U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District of Texas and for exemplifying the highest ideals of service to the U.S. Marshals and to the citizens of the city of Beaumont. Accordingly, the mayor has here and to set his hand and cause the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, July 25, 2023.
You and your family or whoever else would like to come up to receive, please come forward. Congrats again. Congratulations. Well, I'm grateful to have you. Appreciate all you've done. And let's get a picture while you're... Let's grab a... Get a picture after he gets... Thank you for being here.
Yeah, if y'all would like to center up right here. All right, y'all. And one, two, and let me move right here. One, two, and three. You have one more. And one, two, and three. All right, thank y'all.
Well, and we have in the audience as well today State Representative Christian Manuel. Thank you so much for being here.
Yes, absolutely. I'm not long in it, so don't anticipate that. But good evening and giving honor to God and thanking this council for this privilege and recognition. Thank y'all. I started off trying to make a community a better place to live and provide for my children. I did not want to be an old man trying to travel up and down the freeway. So I thought I would try and help Beaumont grow in a way that would be to our advantage and the kids could find a job here. We worked at the YMCA, many churches, schools, and in the political arena. We worked to get people involved, and we did. Because regardless of what one person does, it doesn't matter. You know, you have to have a whole community behind what's going on to make things happen. And that means both black and white, you know. As a U.S. Marshal, you don't see no colors. You just try to help people and try to make a better way. Now, I'm not stupid in thinking that there isn't any. I know that. But just the same, that's not the objective. I don't like calling names because you always miss the one that was the most important and what it was that got done. And everyone matters, everyone. I would mention one or two. Congressman Jack Brooks, to whom much... He always said, "To whom much is given, much is expected." And Mr. Cleveland Isby, he would say of our community, "You need to do more. You need to do more." And then Judge Fisher, Joe Fisher, would say, "The changes you made, don't just make them for the sake of change. Make them to mean something." I never understood all the things that Congressman Brooks said. You know, often we had little gatherings and he'd sit me down and I had to listen. And I wanted to. And... But one of the things that came out of that, I gathered that he was saying, in order to do some of the things it is that need to be done, you have to have authority. And the things it is that you are doing, you have to show people that you know what you're doing, you know, because their attention span is short. So I got to be the U.S. Marshal. However, it was with the help of many a people and organizations and things of that. And I would like to thank my wife Ava, my family, friends, and neighbors. Because without their help, the time and effort for giving me the strength to do the things it is that we got done. And we did get a lot done. And I appreciate y'all for giving me this opportunity. And thank you very much.
Next, we have a proclamation acknowledging the upcoming Pioneer Women in Full Bloom Luncheon.
Whereas Pioneering Women is a grassroots organization founded to enhance the lives of women and its mission is to motivate, educate, activate, and uplift women for the betterment of humanity. The Pioneering Women celebrate the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which guarantees women the right to vote. Achieving this milestone required a lengthy and difficult struggle and the victory took decades of agitation and protest. Whereas this milestone is something many of us take for granted today with our busy schedules. Pioneering Women is dedicated to honoring the legacy of those past pioneers and spotlighting the contributions of present-day pioneers in our community. Whereas in Full Bloom Luncheon, we'll celebrate six extraordinary women for their dedication and contributions to their professions and our communities. The honorees are Judith Smith, Jacqueline Hernandez, Dolores Fulton, Vanessa Glacius, Doreen Bado, and Debbie Bridgman. And Pioneering Women financially support many nonprofit organizations in the community, provides textbooks to students of higher learning, pays for GED testing for second-chance students seeking high school equivalency, and supports women in crisis and senior homebound patients. Now therefore, Roy West, mayor of the city of Beaumont, is very proud and honored to recognize on this 25th day of July 2023, the 2023 Pioneering Women honorees and do hereby declare August 3, 2023, as Pioneering Women in Full Bloom Day in Beaumont. And thank the great women of Pioneering Women for their dedication to the community and the city of Beaumont. Accordingly, the mayor has here and to set his hand and cause the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, July 25, 2023.
Accepting will be Ms. Georgine Guillory, founder of Pioneering Women Organization. And those that are with you that you would like to come up and stand with you, you're welcome. And you can come receive it. And then we can take a photograph and then you can speak. Congratulations.
All right, y'all. One, two, and three.
Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And will all the Pioneering Women members stand that's here? Thank you so much for always taking part in this great luncheon honoring women in our community that's out there in the trenches making life better for a whole lot of people. And Roy, thank you last year with your dancing on that 360 machine. I just saw it yesterday. But anyway, hopefully, y'all, I know you all have a table and we appreciate you supporting us. Thank you.
Now, those that are here for the recognition and proclamations and would like to leave, now is the time to do so. And thank you for coming. Pretty good. All right, now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, on the regular agenda, or speak on any matters of public concern. But you will only be permitted to speak one time. We now... We no longer are using the green slips. Citizens may now sign up to speak by using the kiosk as you walk in. And there's an employee there to assist you with signing up for the rest of this month. The city clerk will call your name. When it's your time to speak, when you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. Please keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on as you approach the podium. The red light will come on when your time's up. Thank you. And Tina?
Loretta Victorian, public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm West in the city council. My name is Loretta Victorian. I live at 4120 Laurel Lake Lane in Beaumont, Texas, 77703. I'm here to speak about my childhood neighborhood. Back in the day, when I was little, cable, Isla, Linton, Forest, Maple. I tell you, my feet would burn in the summertime walking down to the pool because there was always asphalt. No holes, no grass growing up. And so that's why I'm here, just to speak up for my old neighborhood. Because it's just a mess, a total mess. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. And as a reminder, if you speak, somebody from the city will get with you to make sure your concerns are being met.
Ricky Jason, public comments.
God bless each and every one of you. I am community activist Ricky Jason and I also am the protege of the late Dick Gregory. And I'm also here on behalf of United for Mr. Christopher Shaw. Pre-trial starts next month, August 14. And update, August 21 is the trial. And I know some of you have saw the videotape. You know, say no more. We want to see the videotape because the tape speaks volume. It speaks what happened to Mr. Shaw. Because he represents all of us. I was just with Mr. Shaw and his grandkid had asked him, "Grandpa, can you take us to the park?" "Grandpa, can we go swimming?" It's sad. And Mayor, I know you're gonna do the right thing and the rest of the board members, you know, can't stand behind this hill. Officer James Gillum needs to be fired. I came here last time and I spoke to y'all and the sheriff department and Ms. Zina Stevenson. They need to release that videotape immediately. This time, Christopher Shaw got a notice and his attorneys got a notice about the trial. Last month, they didn't get no notice. Judge Warkell West told them they should have called the court. That's not professional. That's tacky. Even a judge have to follow the rules. I'm just here to say that for those that's watching this hill, we do have a group, United for Christopher Shaw, joining us. Reverend Al Sharpton will be here as well. Chuck D from Public Enemy is gonna be here. It's gonna be a lot of people here next month. And Mayor, please answer your phone. Please step up because the buck stops with you and it stops with the city attorney. He know what's fixing to happen. And Beaumont, it happened in '72, the boy Brown. The family never, ever got justice. You know, but Christopher Shaw is gonna get justice, you know. And I pray to God, have mercy, that you're gonna step up, Mayor, and do the right thing and fire him. Because if that had been your child or if it had been the other way around, if Christopher Shaw would have been white, it would have been a whole different story. It's a new time and it's a new era. United for Christopher Shaw, I'm calling for justice. And Mayor, I pray that you do the right thing and don't take vacations like the other judge did. And do what's right. God bless you.
Albert Harrison, public comments.
Mayor, city council, other concerned citizens. I brought this particular problem to city council before about my water bill. Now, the what I received, I'm not satisfied with. The water bill does say this account receives a senior system discount. I'm not satisfied with that. When I get a bill from Energy, Gas, Central, T-Mobile, anywhere else, it has a credit or it tells me if I have a credit. It tells me if there's anything else going on on my bill. It clearly reads out, "I cannot understand why the city of Beaumont is not doing this." I mean, is it a matter of money? If that's the case, hey, I'm a taxpayer. So I know my $52 I pay per year tax is only a drop in the bucket. At the same time, I still would like to see a bill that will show me what this actual discount is. They say what I'm getting, but I don't see it on the bill. And that's what I would like to have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carlos Stewart, public comments.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Carlos Stewart. I reside at 4355 Coolidge Street in Beaumont. And I've resided here all of my golden 72 years. So I'm here... I did not come knowing there was going to be a proclamation for the U.S. Marshal. My son is Casey Nonnet and I think he is a U.S. Marshal. He is a special agent right now. So I'm very proud of him and the work that he does. He's very quiet, so just doesn't talk about it much. So my hat goes off to Mr. Batiste. I'm here for at least two reasons or three reasons right now. Let me congratulate all of you who were reelected. And let me congratulate the diversity in government. This is what America should look like. And this is what our children need to have these same opportunities when it's time for their careers. So let me congratulate the council members. I'm a member of Ward 1. Let me congratulate the new city manager, who I've never met, but I have watched on the local educational or government channel. I do watch you. And let me congratulate and say how proud I am of Ms. Shuray. Thank you very much. First thing I want to do is thank Mayor West. At church on Sunday, we looked out in the congregation and it's not hard to see a one white male there. You know, he was there. But I kept wondering, "Who is that? Who is that?" You know, and we did congratulate... Thank him for coming as a visitor. It's very important that he comes at the beginning of his tenure and not only when it's election. That said a lot to us members at our Mother of Mercy Catholic Church. And we welcome all of you to come, visit with us and commune with us and collaborate with us for the good of the city of Beaumont. I'm here also to talk about college prep that we need a lot. I am an educator. I hope my time doesn't run out on me. I'm an educator. I've been an educator for the last 20 years. I worked about 16 years at the telecommunications systems until all the jobs went out. So this... So this past summer, I was elected to be the principal of the Wilson Early College in Port Arthur. College prep is important to me. And I only left Beaumont when BISD chose not to fund the college prep program anymore. So y'all may need to look at that. Please look at Wuthering Heights. I like to walk. I follow the dog park that you talk about. And there are people with dogs out there. Sometimes they're quite vicious, like this morning. I was walking and she had a walk while, and she said, oh, he's a puppy, he won't bite. Really? Thank you.
Thank you.
Get into that.
Thank you.
Triva Johnson, public comments.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Triva Hispoet Johnson. And I live at 655 South 23rd Street, Beaumont, Texas, 77707. In 1963, Dr. Martin Luther King said that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality and tied in a single garment of destiny. As long as issues like what happened with Christopher Shaw is still happening in 2023, and from all the previous injustices that has happened before, then I want to ask what hope do our children, our grandchildren, and our future generations have for real race, racial equality? I absolutely believe that it would make such immense progress for our city and even our state if the powers that be in this city would release the video to what happened that day. Christopher Shaw's life was drastically changed in such a terrible way. I stand with the movement, United for Christopher Shaw, and I encourage you to do the same. This world was given to us with certain systems set in place. But Mayor West, I'd like to remind you that just because they were handed to us that way, they don't have to remain. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe, public comments.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, council, staff. And let's see. It was interesting, the lady that made the comment on Isla Cable and, and Maple about how nice the streets used to be. I delivered newspapers for The Enterprise and Journal back in those days in 1952. And I even went down to Bio, if it's still there, off of Pine. Anyway, those were good days. You, you got to deliver papers in the morning, early morning. And that's when dogs could run free and they came out to greet you as you rode your bicycle down the street, throwing papers. Okay, Bart, I was interested, it was, it was interesting and nice to hear about the synthetic water, water pipe gonna use on Pine Street coming from the Neches. If that's, if that's gonna be a nice bright green, that would look good on piers going through the swamp along the canal. All right, let's move on. Oh, let's see. Mr. Williams, on our Make Ameri-, uh, not America, let's go down to Beaumont. Make Beaumont great again. Some of our streets don't get much notoriety. And one of them is Broadway. And if we could, could come up and trade Broadway and, and Laurel. Move Broadway over to Laurel, Laurel, Broadway. And where my ten, as they exit for Calder, you could tell people, just take Broadway downtown Beaumont. Take a right on, on Broadway and you go right into downtown Beaumont. And then on Laurel, we could make that a green, green belt. We could take half the street and in front of the south, the houses on the south side, we would put a, a green garden in front of every house. We, we'd have to leave the driveway vacant. But then we could plant whatever and just keep it green. I'd like to put in some Setsuma trees and, and lemon trees. They do well without a lot of maintenance. We could offer the garden clubs a chance to, to green up the other plots. And maybe the neighbors would even enjoy that. All right, that gave me a lot of thought this week. Golly.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Christopher Shaw, that was, that was a terrible thing.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Can I buy three more minutes?
Now we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Councilman Getz, seconded by Councilman Samuel. Any discussion?
I had a question.
Councilman Turner?
Mr. Manager, my question is about the citywide pipe bursting. I kinda been having a concern and I still do. We are looking at change order number five on item B. And, you know, I know we talked about it in the past with the change orders. And I understand we, what we'll discover things that we didn't look at when we first originally got there. But I'm still really concerned with what contingencies or what systems or what are possibilities we can put in place so when contractors or whoever bid on these contracts, we don't start off at a number and get to these amount of change orders, what can kind of start getting pretty pricey? Once again, I understand when we get into it, some things will change. But when I start seeing five, six, it's a big alarming concern to me. And I want to just kind of be real concerned about the, the taxpayer dollars and things of that magnitude.
Thank you, council member. Well noted. We'll review that process and give council a report on it.
Any other, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. City manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council considered a request for a rezoning from R S, residential, single-family dwelling, to R M H, residential, multiple-family dwelling, highest density, or more restrictive district for property located north of 2360 South Major Drive. And Joint Public hearing held on June 26, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended 52 to approve this request. This item was held in a previous council meeting. And there were some comments and some requests for additional information, et cetera. So this item is back on the agenda for council's consideration. And staff is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to deny item number one's request for rezoning.
Is there a second? All right, that fails to get a second. Is there a motion for approval?
For approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Getz?
So this proposal would put still another apartment complex on Major Drive. There was neighbors that appeared at the planning and zoning meeting expressing their disappointment and lack of enthusiasm for this apartment project coming into play. One of the reasons is that it's going to have where people from the second floor of the apartment complex will be able to look right in the backyards of some of these residential homes. We've had this happen before on other apartment complexes and on Major Drive. And, you know, when you, when you start looking at what this is doing to Major Drive with all these apartment complexes, as opposed to developing them as retail or single-family, it's, it, it's really not a good look. We need to concentrate, I believe, on getting more single-family residents in this, homes in this town. We have, how many apartment complexes now on Major Drive, Chris?
I would estimate over a dozen. I would like to add, though, since the item got held over, we did do a little additional research. We have seven new complexes that are either, have recently, recently been constructed or are under construction. And that is gonna add approximately 1,156 units to the market. And again, those are along what I would say is the major street corridor, Folsom and 105. And it's also important, again, council had asked for some additional feedback, some additional info, research. And so basically, the rule of thumb for an apartment complex is 6.5, roughly 6.5 daily trips per unit. So that, that takes into account multiple people in a single unit coming and going, maybe to school, to work, to shop, et cetera. So just some additional information, 6.5 daily trips per dwelling unit.
So how's that going to affect traffic in the, in that corridor if we add another apartment complex?
Well, it would increase traffic, for sure.
Okay. How many people spoke against this at the planning and zoning meeting?
We sent out 19 notices or received three in, three against.
Okay. And those that were expressing that they did not want it, did they give reasons?
Let me see if I can find comments here. Basically, they're opposed, not a fit use for the property, single residential homes around the area.
So again, we're being asked to rezonate this from residential, single-family dwelling to residential, multiple-family dwelling. And there's been nobody in that neighborhood speak up in favor of this. We've had several speak against it. I can't support it. I'm not going to.
Any other discussion? Councilman Durio?
Chris, you said in the Major Drive corridor, are there any apartment complexes south of College Street on Major Drive?
Let me see. South of College Street?
Yeah.
There's a-
Like between College and I-10?
I don't believe so. There is a complex right at College and Major. Trying to look on my map here. But I don't see, there's an assisted living facility down there, but I don't see multifamily, south of College.
So this apartment complex is 150 units?
Proposed to be a 150, yes, sir.
Would you say there's a need for those units in the city?
So one of the questions or discussion points that came up last meeting was occupancy rates. We have, for the past many years, been in what's considered a demand position of over 90% occupancy. We did pull some statistics. And for the last year, up until the last year, we've been in that above 90% range. But for the last year, we've dropped below the 90% range. So right now, we're at 87.7 occupancy.
So that, does that mean there is a need or there isn't? In your opinion?
90% is what you would like to see to, to start adding units, so.
Councilman Getz?
So what I'm gathering from your previous remarks, Mr. Boone, is that with all these additional apartment complex scheduled to come online, and you're seeing an occupancy rate drop, you're starting to see oversaturation in the market with apartment complexes. Is that a fair statement?
I don't, I don't want to say that there's an oversaturation because the one thing to keep in mind is, as you know, many of these complexes that I've mentioned are subsidized. And so the folks that are in the development business, they look at things, not just market rate apartments, but also the demand for apartments in certain rent ranges or income ranges. Where you're, if you meet a certain income range, you're eligible for certain subsidy, subsidized units, so.
We know that contractors that are here to work on industrial developments frequently utilize our hotels for temporary housing. Do they frequently utilize apartments in a similar fashion?
I think depending upon, I mean, short answer, yes. I think you'll have some, depending upon their tenure here, they might be in apartment units for six months, a year. We have, as you're aware, have had several new, I guess, RV parks or mobile home parks that have really, more so RV parks that have come online in the city in the last few years. I think those address that demand to some degree. But I suspect that some, some would be in these apartments.
And so what I'm urging this council to consider is the long view, the, the long-term effects. Because these industrial developments will be built out one day. Then these contractors will pack up, they'll go home to wherever home is. These apartments will lay fallow. They'll start falling into waste and disrepair. You, you can only absorb so many. Our population is not growing. We hope that it will in the future. But who, who's filling up all these apartments that are coming online? Where, where are the residents coming from?
Yeah, again, that's, that's kind of the granular information that we're not aware of. It would just be basically subjective comment on our part. You know, what we're looking at is there appears to be a demand based on the applications we've seen recently. And again, before us today is, you know, whether or not this rezoning is appropriate. Okay, for this location.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Chris, is this particular development, public housing units, or what kind of development is it?
To my knowledge, it is market rate. So it's not subsidized, to my knowledge.
All right. Chris?
Yes, sir.
So these apartment complexes, like Councilman Getz just mentioned, are they the majority used by contractors? Are they filled with temporary folks? Or do people that live and work here stay on those apartments?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have that kind of information. I mean, I, I can give you my subjective. I would suspect that, you know, most of the units, well, that would just be my kind of conjecture. So I'm not, again, I suspect that some of the units are filled by contractors, but probably the majority are not. But just my, my guess.
And on this picture up here, how many actual houses butt up against where the apartments are gonna be?
Right, so it's-
It looks like just the one to the south.
Well, to the south and the north.
Is that building a house because it sits way back off the street? And it doesn't have a street actually going to it? Or is that some type of storage building? Or is that, that's not Dollar General, is it? No, that's a little farther up.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I think to the north, there's a house. It looks like there's a white, that may be an accessory building, but it looks like there's a house up in the northeast corner. And then certainly to the south, there is a house.
I was just wondering, how many stories is this complex gonna be?
Two, I believe.
I was just wondering, are there any houses with backyards that they'll be able to see into from the second floor of some of these apartments?
Yes, sir. So Tina, if you can go to the site plan, it should be maybe just before this. Okay. So there were some questions that came up about the site plan. So the site plan is not fixed or finalized. So I think there are gonna have to be some adjustments to be made. But what they've proposed is essentially, the apartment complexes, if you can imagine the side of property line, there will be a access driveway proposed, a row of parking stalls, and then the two-story building. So a parking stall depth is- So a parking stall depth is roughly 19, 20 feet deep. Uh, you've got a, um, the travel aisle, so, you know, you're talking about a two-story building that's approximately 40 feet off the property line.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman Samuel.
Okay, I've listened to various comments. There is a demand for housing in Beaumont, is that correct? For this type of, uh, housing?
All we can say is that we have a, you know, we have a thousand new units that have been coming on, that have come online, either currently are or have in the last couple of years. But with this kind of application, that's an indication that there appears to be a market.
But, okay, so there is a market, uh, and, uh, there's a demand. This has gone to planning and zoning, uh, it's gone through the process, and there's a recommendation for approval. They meet all the criteria that's set forth by our rules and regs in the city of Beaumont, is that correct?
It has gone to planning commission, planning commission has recommended the rezoning for approval.
Okay, so simply, uh, now this is, it appears to be a question of, uh, a subjective question and a subjective reasoning why it should not be approved. If we did that with all areas of our city, uh, maybe it would be in a different condition. However, that's what rules are made for. You meet the rules, you meet the regulations, and everything should be fine, unless you have a subjective idea by, uh, a person or a group. To be fair, they meet the criteria. There is a demand for housing in our city. Are we gonna be selective about what goes in every part of our city? That's not an outcry from the citizens saying that that's unreasonable. We talk about looking in folks' backyards, uh, in, into, uh, their yards. There are three houses that's shown here. This is an area in which Beaumont is growing. So I, I believe they meet the criteria, and I think it should be approved.
Any other discussion? Councilman Turner?
Chris, in instances like this, and what you're experiencing, things that took place in the past, have they, what, what, what other options were available when you had issues with backyards, or this is just something standard that normally happens, and it's either you voted up and down? Like, is it a possible, the medium or solution? I just want to know from your experience, how has this been handled in the past?
Well, it is, it is important to note that this is a rezoning request. And so what we're looking at here is whether or not this particular property should be, as it is now, which is single-family, or a multifamily, or a commercial, or what have you. That's what's before us today. We've, we've spent a lot of time talking about the proposed use, which is the apartment complex. But it is important to remember that zoning's not conditional. And so, it, whatever they built out there would have to meet the zoning, would have to be building codes, et cetera, but they don't have to adhere to the site plan you got before you. So, and I bring that up because you asked about the setbacks. And so if, if it's a situation where a specific use permit is required, or council's deciding, is, you know, the zoning's okay, but the question is, is this use okay? And is the site plan okay? And is this building too tall, too close? Um, you know, that's when we typically get into that kind of discussion. Now, as mentioned, we've been discussing, discussing the apartment complex as proposed, which is relevant in that you have to conceive of what potentially could go there, as whether or not the rezoning is appropriate. But, you, again, with it not being conditional, um, what could go, the thing to keep in mind is, is this an appropriate zone? Because what could ultimately go there might be very, very different than what we're talking about. So, again, when we talk about too high, too close, things like that, that's usually done in the context of the specific use permit.
All right, Councilman Getz?
Chris, right now, it's zoned residential, single-family, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So the only thing that can go there right now is residential, single-family homes, correct?
Well, there are a few other uses, like churches and things that require a specific use permit, but in general, the things you think about in a single-family neighborhood, that's what typically goes there. Yes, sir.
And when the surrounding neighbors and citizens purchase their homes, build their homes, they did so knowing that they were building and purchasing their homes in a residential, single-family neighborhood. And so now here comes an apartment developer saying, oh, I know right now, we don't meet your criteria, but we're gonna ask you to change that criteria from a residential, single-family district to a multiple-family district. So, no, right now, objectively, they don't meet the criteria. They will only meet the criteria to build their apartment complex if this council says, okay, despite the objections we've had from neighbors, uh, despite the problems that citizens are having, uh, despite that it may negatively impact the values of their property, despite the fact that it's going to allow people to look down into backyards, despite the fact that it's going to increase traffic, despite all that, uh, we're going to be asked to change the criteria from residential, single-family to multiple housing, so this apartment developer can go forward with his apartments. That's what we're actually being asked to do today, isn't it?
To rezone the property, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilman Samuel, then I'll go to Councilman Durio, then I'm gonna have a, say, I need an opportunity, and then we'll have a vote.
Okay. Major Drive, is that a major arterial street?
Yes, sir.
Is that one of the highest-density travel classifications there is?
It is one of our higher-traffic arterials within the city.
Okay. And that, as it stands, that's a growth area, that part of Major Drive, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So can you build a grocery store, uh, in a residential zone property?
No, sir.
Can you put a convenience store in a residential?
No, sir.
And those type of businesses are normally along major arterial streets, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This is a major arterial street, correct?
Yes, sir.
So at some point, if there's gonna be commercial development, that will have to be changed.
Yes, sir. And to, if, if I could to that point, let me just, let me just add, and one of the things we're looking at is, probably sooner rather than later, we probably need to update our comprehensive plan. This stretch of Major, actually from really Tram Road all the way to, um, really I-10 has, 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 um, you know, there've been a lot of development along this corridor, there've been a lot of rezonings along this corridor. So I just bring that up because this is probably, um, you know, one of the key areas to look at in terms of, at the end of the day, what does this council want Major Drive to look like?
So, the request is for it to become residential, multifamily dwelling, correct?
Yes.
Not commercial?
Correct.
Okay. So that's restricted, this is not the most extensive zoning that they're requesting, is that correct?
So they're requesting RMH, which is residential, multifamily, highest-density, uh, highest-density zoning.
So I just hope we have as much, uh, conversation and concerns when someone wants to put a gaming room in a neighborhood that's already experiencing those type of issues. I hope we have the same concern as that we're giving to this project, simply because we feel that's not appropriate, but that's one of the highest-density, uh, travel streets in Beaumont. And this is not asking for the most extensive use in zoning.
Councilman Durio?
So if this is approved for a rezoning, would they have to come back before council for a specific use permit?
Not under this zoning for this proposed use. Yes, sir.
Also, if at a time when, uh, this, if this project goes through, if we see a need for more traffic control around that project, is that something that we would consider doing as far as, you know, stoplights going in and out of, uh, the property or something like that?
It's a Tech Dot Control Corridor, but Bart, do you have any thoughts on that?
Tech Dot recently did a study of Major Drive as a whole, um, and incorporated what we were able to give them as future development. And so, um, things they've already done is lower some speed limits along the way, they worked with the city to put a, a light in at Village. We're continuing to work with them to put a light in at Northwest Parkway there. So they, they are realizing the, the changing traffic flows on Major as it becomes busier, and, uh, are looking at, at what to do to keep it safe.
So as, as it becomes more developed, then they're responding, uh, Tech Dot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Also, um, the developer that's doing these apartments, does he have a history of working here in Beaumont?
I did not recognize his name, but I don't know. We can find out and let you know.
Oh, one last question. On Major Drive, uh, you spoke about how much traffic is on Major Drive. Wouldn't it, you, could you say that the majority of the traffic on Major Drive would be north of College Street?
Well, I'll, let me just, let's see, let me pull some of Tech Dot's numbers. Roughly in this area, and some of these are a couple of years old, some of them are more recent, but it looks like about 12,000 average daily in this stretch of Major. Looks like as you get north of Phelan, it starts to be more like 19,000. As you get towards Delaware, 25, or excuse me, 20,000 and 25,000. So it's a little bit less down here than we think of in terms of around Delaware.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd just like to add, being in residential mortgage business for a number of years, oftentimes, when we talk about apartment complexes too, it's about supply and demand of newer properties, because you do have families that are moving in that perhaps aren't in a position to buy, and they're wanting something you don't buy, you don't move into apartments and fix them up. They are in the current state they're in, and they're in the locations that they're in. So there is a life cycle for homes, for apartment complexes, and that is certainly something developers look at. And for those that are, uh, me being newer to city council, and I've been learning, we have, uh, we had a public hearing on this in planning and zoning, and many of the councilmen, we had to have a quorum there to hear this. So we're not hearing for it the first time, and, but this is a chance for us to speak on it. But I understand, uh, we have processes with, uh, many different committees that are made up of residents that have been, uh, been invited to participate and have invested a lot of time as well. And so they have had a chance to review this as well, and I, you know, so I think, uh, we certainly have had much discussion on it. So at this point, unless there's additional discussion, I'd just like to call the vote. All right, there's all in favor of approving item number one. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
The motion is carried. City manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Yes, Mayor. Council considered a resolution approving the proposal submitted by Preferred Facilities Group USA to replace the roof membrane at the Beaumont Police Department located at 255 College Street. Uh, there's a need to replace the roof membrane, it was, uh, it was damaged in a hailstorm in April. And, uh, basically, this is bringing, uh, this to you for immediate need to replace the membrane and approval, uh, and enter agreement with Preferred Facilities Group to do so.
All right, is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number two. Any discussion? Councilman Durio?
Since this was damaged during a hailstorm, was there no insurance to cover this?
Yes, we, it is covered under our insurance. However, our lab administrator, Ms. Arsenault, is coming to the podium. Um, at the time that this incident occurred, we were in the process of going out for more insurance. And there was a financial decision to not incur an additional claim, because we didn't want our, basically, claim history to appear bad. And the cost for what we would have paid in a deductible and what we're paying out of pocket was so minimal that we decided to just pay the claim. And I'll just let Marissa speak to the rest of it.
So I don't know if you guys remember when we came, um, with the most recent insurance proposal, um, it wasn't the full coverage that we would have hoped to obtain. So, um, when this happened, when we received notice of the police roof being damaged, it was during that time where we were still trying to obtain, uh, the remaining insurance. After not being able to obtain that insurance, uh, June and I started working on getting insurance through TML and joining the risk pool. And should that not work, then we were going to go out for bid again, uh, sometime around February to obtain insurance in May of 2024. In order to do that and get better numbers and better coverage than what we had this year, our claims need to be down. How much, um, our broker and our carriers paid also needs to be down. So with us having wanted to take more risk on, um, and that risk being so close to this number, we decided that it would be in our best interest in the long run to pay for it out of pocket versus putting, putting it on the insurance, I'm sorry.
And just for reference, uh, our deductible cost is around $100,000. So to pay $100,000 and for that to negatively affect our claim history, the risk and reward was just not there.
And what's that, uh, what is that gonna cost? Is it like 370,000 or something like that? For us to pay for it?
I guess, I guess Keith, that's Keith's thing now. Come on up, Keith.
I know, I saw it. 398? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, good afternoon. Yeah, the total cost of the project is 398,46088. And we're basically going back down to the existing roof system that's there, just like we did previously. So we are saving some costs by doing that, instead of going back down to the deck.
So is the roof leaking?
Yes. We, we have placed a temporary ice and water shield membrane on there to buy us time, so we've had expenditures on that.
You know if we have any plans to replace this building in the near future?
I think we'd like to, but there's not any immediate plans.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, sir. That was one of my initial questions, but Chris Durio, thank you for asking it. Just in the future, we know the state of our police department, I don't know if, maybe in the future, capital development, we're looking at these type of investments, if, similar to the Civic Center, when, in my opinion, prior to me being on the council, the commercial kitchen equipment is actually on the side, or the waterway is, you know, I would always think it's way more logical to have that on the other side and eventually think long-term to open up that side, so you can actually see the riverfront if we ever develop the Civic Center like we're kind of considering now. I just want to keep those type of decisions, the future in mind, when we spend this type of money, so we can kind of look at if that's something we're interested in the future. I appreciate it.
And we're sitting, our council member, Turner, as we develop the, uh, capital, well, community improvement plan, we're calling it now, we are taking those things into consideration. Uh, if you look on the long term, I guess, what is the term for future consideration, we, we have things like the police department, because they, they are having, beginning to have a, uh, an issue with space over there, and likewise with the convention center. So we're looking at those for things in the, on CIP for future consideration. So we're looking at those for things in the, on CIP for future consideration.
We, we need to, we really need to look at that because those policemen are getting pretty jealous of all these new fire stations.
And trucks.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes or is carried. City manager, can we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council considered a resolution to amend the public participation plan for the CDBG Housing Division. It's basically amendments to align with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations. And staff has recommended approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number three. Any discussion? Councilman Turner?
I just want to compliment staff. Uh, just some of these things I read. It, it, it is really intriguing that we're gonna do things to kind of physically go into the community and engage more the citizens on what we have to offer. So I just wanted to take the time out to compliment that department for putting this together because, you know, it's a lot of effort to physically go into the community and educate the community on some of the things we have to offer. And I want to say I appreciate that.
Thank you. Staff is listening and thank you for those kind comments.
There's no other discussion. All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. City manager, would you please read uh item number four?
Yes. Conducting election for mayor pro temp. Basically, City Council Shelley elected a mayor pro temp for a one-year term. That one-year term is ending at, at this point. And it's time for council to select or vote another, uh, vote a person for mayor pro temp.
Is there a motion to elect a new mayor pro temp? Discussion? Well, we need a motion. That's the motion? You're making the motion?
Asking to have the floor. Uh, I move to elect Councilman Turner as mayor pro temp.
Okay, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to elect Councilman Turner as mayor pro temp. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Congratulations.
I'll make sure I move my car.
You have until the 27th.
City manager, may I ask you to please take us into the fir- first public hearing?
Yes. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Turner. Uh, council to conduct a public hearing and consider resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application and execute a contract with the Texas Department of Transportation to receive operating assistance funds for the zip bus system. And mayor, if you open the public hearing, I think we'll be there.
The public hearing is now open. May we have a staff report?
Yes, sir. So this is um, every year Tech Dot will allocate a uh grant for our transit system. And this year, and it's done through a formula basis, depending on how much funding is available at the state level. And then it's run through a calculator in terms of how much is allocated. So this is um funding uh for FY 2024 uh in the amount of $496,914. That would go towards the operation of the uh system.
Okay, at this point, we'll allow testimony from any interested parties?
I don't have any at this time, mayor.
All right, then may we uh proceed with the second public hearing?
You need to close this public hearing.
Right, that's what I meant to do. We're closing the first public hearing and now we'll move on to the second public hearing.
Council, council to conduct a public hearing to consider amendment ordinance number 03-048 to designate 3180 Park, a structure determined by council to be unsafe and commercial on June 24th, 20, I mean, June 24th, 2003, to now be designated as a residential structure and waive all demolition costs incurred by the city as well as interest charges or fees. And may if you will open the public hearing, we'll proceed.
Yes, uh, the public hearing is now open for the second item and can we have a staff report?
Yes, mayor. So as the manager mentioned, um, this item goes back to Ju- uh, a public hearing and uh ensuing ordinance by city council on June 24th, 2003. And the property in question is 3180 Park. And during that hearing back in 2003, uh, the, the structure at that location was determined to be unsafe and ordered to be demolished. As y'all recall, maybe from last week, uh, residential structures that are ordered unsafe and demolished, we, the city do not charge uh for the demolition and we do not attach a lien. Whereas commercial structures, we do charge for demolition, we do attach a lien. And so back in, again, 2003, during that hearing, this property was designated as a uh commercial structure. And the property, the structure, of course, was demolished. Eventually, um, a lien was attached to the property. In the ensuing years, um, Mr. Durden, who I believe is here, who is and was the owner, has approached the city over the years and requested that that lien uh be removed from the property. And his argument or his statement was that the property was no longer being used as commercial but was being occupied by an individual. And therefore should have been classified at the time as residential, um, should have been um basically not subject to that um attachment of the lien and charges for the commercial demolition. So um, and again, in the ensuing years, uh, we've had some conversations with Mr. Durden and we've asked him if, if there's any kind of documentation to the fact that it was, was, was occupied residentially. You know, we would be happy to take a look at it. I think he tried to find some, some records and was not able to locate them. Again, it's been, you know, going on 20 years now, so that's certainly understandable. Uh, the flip side is some of our city records are not, uh, we no longer have. So we have many of them. We have the ordinance in question. We have the records, the minutes. But some of our records, we no longer have just because it's been so long. So again, Mr. Uh, Mr. Durden has again asked if he could uh plead, make a plea to the council to please remove uh, to remove the commercial charges as the property uh was occupied residentially uh back in 2003. And that brings us to uh today's hearing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any uh testimony from interested parties?
Vernon Durden.
Uh, city council, uh, mayor. I brought my wife with me today because y'all been kind of tough on me. So I don't think you can be that tough on the pretty lady here to my immediate right. Tina, be nice today. Uh, thank you for this hearing. Y'all have received, I asked the city attorney to send most of y'all the emails that I've been sharing with Mr. Boone. I want to first uh say that uh Mr. Boone has done a, a good job at receiving my emails and trying to address it based on the ordinances that are in place today. Um, Mr. Turner has said before and also Mr. Boone that these ordinances are either outdated or don't address every problem. The building, when I bought it in 1992, I bought from Reverend B.R. Brown. He owned a church on Pine Street. He was using the building at that time as a residence for a parishioner who was doing work at his church. And he was trading off the services to live in that building to do the janitorial services at his church and also repairs. When I bought it, I used him to do the same thing in the building. Imagine getting a call of a kid or someone in the park with a gun. Imagine the policeman rolling up, seeing a gun and firing and killing Tamira Rice, a 12-year-old, simply because they did not take the time to investigate that that was a toy gun. The ball was in the park. She's no longer alive because the policeman at that time didn't take the time to investigate further. There's a project now called Project Innocence where DNA can be checked with people to find out if they were actually at the site of the crime. And the people later found out that the DNA was not there. So the person cannot be found guilty. The DNA of this building is that. There's no metal. It was being used as a residence. The man named Mr. Taft got mail there. He had utilities in his name there. When I bought it, Reverend Brown had already discontinued the business of a plating shop. Part of the problem could be that I bought one part of the building and Mr. Spikes bought another part that he did use as a construction, I mean, as a commercial business. That building still stands. It's metal. Has pipe, has trolleys and a big electrical box that would demonstrate that it was a commercial building. The one I had was all wood. No concrete, no metal. I did have some meetings with Mr. Boone and he did ask me about any documents. And I shared with him that any document that I may have had, we've had three storms since then. And I don't, I told him the only document I would keep is probably still have in reserve is my marriage license. And I married her, not because I wanted to live with her, but because I couldn't live without her. Her birthday is coming up on the 27th. One of the ordinances that you have that's also outdated is the one about residency and being acknowledged in this city. You had a time here where you, you acknowledged people have been married over 50 years. I applied for that. But we were turned down because supposedly you have an ordinance that says you have to live in the city to be recognized. We've been married 53 years. Alden would say I should get a medal from her for being married to her. But I, I did give her a medal, gold. So anyway, I uh hold that the building was never a commercial building. I never used it as a commercial building. The business had already been shut down in the mid 80s. This building was bought when Mayor Evelyn Lord was the mayor. It's about uh six mayors ago. And I've talked to Mr. Boone and he is strapped with an ordinance that's outdated and antiquated. It does not address every situation. If the ordinance would have said last use or prior use or, or current use of the building, we would not be standing here having this discussion. I received a lot of letters from the city. Some are open, some are don't. I got this one sometime last year and uh I hate to tell y'all, most of them I throw them away. I do open them occasionally to see whether or not it's been removed. This one came uh January of 23, I opened this one, saw that the lien was still there. And this one came the year before. I didn't even open it. So I don't plan on opening it. I hope you can understand my position. It was a residential building at the time when I bought it. It was a residential building when I had it and that's why I think it should be considered residential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other interested parties?
No, sir. That's it.
Hey, there, there could be a check in that envelope.
It is. Got zero on it.
Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading? Oh, I gotta close the public.
No, no, no. If there's any discussion that needs to be had, if there's questions for staff or questions for interested parties, it needs to occur during public hearing.
They didn't cover that in my training last week, so thank you. So are, is there any discussion? Uh, I've got Councilman Getz, Councilman Durio. Councilman Getz, you first.
Mr. Boone, 3180 Park, when it was being used as a commercial building, what was this building?
It was a plating company at the time. Uh, what I didn't share, my wife told me, don't be up there doing a lot of talking about what it was. She said, just get to the facts. She said, if people got comments, just give them the facts, they'll work it out. So it was a plating shop. Uh, Reverend Brown had a plating business. His health began failing him.
What is a plating business? What is that?
Chrome plating. Chrome, you, you plate uh different items. I had a motorcycle. Reverend Brown and I lived in the same neighborhood in Blossom area. Uh, his health began failing him, so he closed the business and the, and uh the buildings were sitting there vacant. So he put them up for sale. He contacted me about one building because at the time I had some room property.
Is it a vacant lot now?
It's a vacant lot now. It is. But the other building that shared the same address, 3180, is still standing. No one's working there. There's not a business there, but it's, it's still there.
When this building was put on the demolition list back in 2003, and we've got, we've been provided copies of that, um, you owned the building at that time, is that right?
I still own the property now.
Do you, okay. Uh, and I see that it was designated as commercial back then. Why didn't you appear before council and say, wait a minute, this isn't a commercial building? This is a residential building or it's a building that's been used as residence back in 2003?
Excellent question. I asked the same question to the city attorney at the time. He told me, we finally got a good address on you. So I did not have an opportunity to come before the board. It could be also that the other property is also designated 3180. I even went to the Planning and Zoning Committee upstairs and to talk to them about that. And they told me, you don't even own that property. So I left.
So are you saying you had no notice that this was being put on the demolition list?
I had information that it was demolished when a man came and asked me, could he rent the building to store items in it?
That was before it was demolished?
That was after the demise.
After?
Well, before demise, yes.
How, how did that go down? I don't understand. You, you said somebody came to you to ask if they could rent some space out of that building to store something? What, what then triggered your knowledge that it was on a demolition list?
I, I received a notice in the mail of the demolition lien.
The lien had already been put on the building because
Yeah, I
How, how, how could it be put on the building if it wasn't demolished?
Say again?
Maybe I'm not communicating. A lien's only put on the building after it's demolished. Somebody came to you before it was demolished and asked if you could rent space in the building?
Yes. Yes.
So there's no lien at that time?
No.
And in that process of somebody coming to you and asking you if you could rent him some space in that building, is that when you found out that this building was scheduled to be demolished at some time in the future?
So what my wife did, the convention I had to do was go dirty in this meeting. I received nothing on this building for four or five years. And after a period of time, I started receiving notices about this lien. Why it changed, I don't know, but I'm going to go high, not go low here. But it disappeared, and all of a sudden it came back.
Mr. Dern, I'm just trying to understand if you had notice before the council at that time in 2003 decided that, yes, we're going to go forward and enter an order to demolish the building. If you had noticed that the council was considering doing that, did you have notice that the council was considering doing that?
No.
You did not?
No.
Okay. So if you had no notice, you would not have known to come to council?
And I did not put the building on a... We have these programs to repair because, like I mentioned, a few hurricanes came. If you read the emails I sent, the person living there left in the night. He moved away. I learned that from a fellow golfer, that he moved away. I have a Beaumont post office that says West Fair Road, 7713 Beaumont, Texas. But whether you know or not, I live out in the China area, which is about 30 minutes away. So I didn't have the occasion to be at the building or at that site very often.
Okay. So this question would be for Ms. Reed or Mr. Boone. Does the city have any records of sending Mr. Dern a notice out at his China address saying that, and this would be back in 2003, trying to say that, hey, your property is going to be considered to be put on a demolition list, and this is your notice to come and speak to us and ask for relief?
Yeah, the only records we have are the ordinance. The only, in other words, to answer your question directly, we do not have the original notice.
Yeah, so that would be outside of the retention schedule, but the law would require that we send it to the address that's posted for the property on J-CAD. So whatever the property address was listed at the time in 2003 on J-CAD is where they would have sent the notice. So that was in China to his P.O. box.
And Mayor, if I could, I can add maybe a little bit of detail to the timeline. So, and this may help, the demolition charge was entered into the finance system May 26, 2004. It was sent to collections July 15, '05. The lien was filed October 11, 2007. Emailed statements, no, excuse me, we mailed statements, this would be the city, mailed statements to P.O. Box 6628 Beaumont, Texas, and then suppressed the mail when it was returned by the post office. But I do not know when because there are no notes in our system. I'm reading an email from one of our staff. So that's just a little bit of the timeline in terms of the billing versus the lien.
But that's after the demolition had already occurred.
So, yes, sir.
So what I'm gathering is that we have no evidence that would counter Mr. Dern's statement that, hey, I never got a notice that council was considering demolition of this property. And, you know, if I would have, I would have been here and spoken up. We don't have anything like that in our records at this point in time.
We do not have the original notice. No, sir.
Okay.
Madam Attorney, is this something that, is it any legal reasons why we can or can't do this, approve this?
Actually, no.
Okay.
It's within your discretion.
All right.
Councilman.
Not yet. Not yet. Not yet.
You've got a week left?
I've got two Thursday.
My bad, Councilman, my bad.
Madam Attorney, so we have no proof that there's been notice given on the demolition to Mr. Dern, do we?
There's no evidence to support or negate it. No, sir.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem.
I have one, Mayor Protem. In a situation like this, just the amount of time, is it standard that it would take this long for us to get to a point where we can address something like this?
Yes, sir. So we send a bill immediately. And again, the city, as we went through last week, I guess, the city never wants to be in a position to have to tear down a building because we're using taxpayers' dollars, whether they're local or federal, taxpayers' dollars to do the demolition work, right? And then we send a bill immediately, again, trying to recapture some of that. And only when we don't get paid do we have to look at filing a lien for commercial with the hope that, you know, one day we do get our money back. And it should be mentioned, it's in the second page of the memo here. You know, the original, I guess, kind of the cost to the city for the demolition was But it looks like, you know, the interest has accrued over time, and it looks like the amount is now 23. So it's well over twice just because of the interest accrued over time.
Mr. Dern, when did you actually find out that the bobcats and backhoes were there to tear down your building? I mean, were you there on scene when the building was being torn down?
No.
You found out after the fact that your building had been torn down?
Yes.
That was a surprise to you that that had happened?
Somewhat.
If I own property and somebody tears it down, I'm going to have a reaction of some kind. Did you?
I did.
What did you do?
I got angry, of course. I mean, I got a building torn down, but at the same time, you know, there are other things that are more priority for me. My personal life, my father passed away. My mother's living home by herself. I retired early to take care of my mom, so that took precedence.
As it should. The building at the time it was torn down, what was it valued at?
I don't know.
Kristina?
It's been so long ago, I don't know. I don't remember.
All right. Let me see. I don't, you know, J-CAD has some appraisal records, but I don't think it goes back that far.
I just want to, I have the cap on that says, these guys that flew the airplane, Tuskegee Airmen, they could actually fly. And they were not allowed to fly in World War II because someone felt that they couldn't fly the airplane. Eleanor Roosevelt went to that base and flew the airplane and took an executive order to let the Tuskegee Airmen fly and escort bombers, and they did not lose a one. I'm requesting an executive order, if nothing else, to remove this lien. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the public hearing?
Mayor, just to sort of answer Councilman Getz's question, the J-CAD records go back to 2005, which would have been, of course, after the demolition. So the land market, the value of the land was $1,850, but I don't know the value of the structure.
Any other discussion? If there... Okay, I've got a...
So you're saying the value of the property as it exists, the last notice was 1,800?
Well, so back to, I was trying to look back to the earliest appraisal or value of the, from the appraisal district, but it only goes back to 2005. And so the land market given was 1,850, just for the land. The same.
Is there any other discussion by any interested parties or council? If there's no other discussion, the public hearing is now closed. Will you take us? Please read, read item number five.
Okay. Mayor, council conduct and consider resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application and execute a contract with the Texas Department of Transportation to receive operating assistance funds for the zip. You had the public hearing and gotten input on this, and we recommend an approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Any discussion? Councilman Durio?
I just wanted to say, speaking to some of the folks in the community, would like to see if some of the hours for the zip could be extended. Some folks work nights, some people work graveyards, or some people are looking for the job, and transportation is keeping them from being able to get one. So I would just ask if that was something that transit folks could look into.
Do we have an idea how long the request?
Till midnight. That's what they ask.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. City Manager, can we have the reading of item number six?
Yes. Council consider amending ordinance number 03-048 to designate 3180 Park, a structure determined by council to be unsafe and commercial on June 24, 2003, to now be designated as a residential structure and waive all demolition costs incurred by the city as well as interest charges or fees. You've heard the public hearing, and now council is asked to consider amending the
Is there a motion for amending the ordinance for number six?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number six. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. City Manager, can you please take us into the work session?
Yes. Mayor, work session, work session to review and discuss the proposed street rehabilitation citywide Phase Five project. This is a comprehensive look at repairing streets around town, and we are coming to you today, or Barks coming to you today for a discussion on that.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. So we're approaching the end of street rehabilitation Phase Four, and we're looking to put out Phase Five for bid under the recommendations of the pavement management consultant that came and surveyed the city. We're putting $8 million a year into street rehab with the goal to get up to a 69 at the end of the five-year period. Maybe it'd help to turn that on. So we maintain, the city of Beaumont maintains 642 centerline miles of roadway within the jurisdiction. As you can see from the pie chart, the majority of these streets are asphalt pavement, 57%. Public Works Department designs bids and manages the program. And it doesn't just consist of the milling and overlay for the street rehab that we're talking about today, but it also includes curb and gutter repair, concrete pavement repair, pavement markings, brick sidewalk repair, and pavement preservation, which we had added this year in addition to the normal street rehab that we've had in the Eight million a year is currently allocated for the program, with the majority of this money being spent on asphalt overlay projects. The map on your display right now illustrates the work that's under construction and that's been completed for street rehab Phase One through Four, in addition to the pavement preservation Phase One, with all of this work being split roughly evenly 25% between wards one through four.
What's the difference between the orange and the green and the red?
The green is done, the red's to be done, the orange is under construction. And I'll show a little bit later, I'll go to our website, I'll show, we don't have them combined all necessarily in one, but we do have live maps on the website that show the current phases and the past phases of work being done with the color code and the legend on that. So this is a little dense, but it gets all the information on one page, so I'll walk you through it. The overall surveyed PCI, or Pavement Condition Index, assessed in 2019 was a 67. I believe in 2011, which was the first time we ever did it, it was a 63. So when we first assessed it, it was a 63. Council invested money in improving the roadway system, and 2019, we had gotten it up to a 67. We're continuing to invest with the goal to get it up to a 69 by 2025 is the end of the five-year period. So as you can see, this puts a lot of information on one page, but, and the ward breakdowns that you see here are the ones that exist with the newly redrawn ward lines that recently occurred. So 20% of the roadway miles within the city are in Ward One, 19% of them in Ward Two. Ward Three has 33% at the largest number, and Ward Four has 28% of the overall road miles. And then you can see on the right-hand side, we have the breakdown asphalt or concrete within each of the wards, and then the average PCI as a whole within the ward, and I have them down per either asphalt or concrete. So as you can see, while we've split the wards evenly by population or by citizen, we're not evenly split by road miles within the city. We have different amounts of road miles, and we have differing conditions. So if you look at Wards One and Two, we have higher PCI ratings overall. I'd said our goal was to get up to a 69 overall in the city by 2025. You can see we're above that in Wards One and Two currently. In fact, Ward Two has a 78 PCI rating. Wards Three and Four are trailing behind that. The concrete is doing really well within Wards Three and Four. You can see the PCI in Three for concrete, 75, and the PCI in Four for concrete is 71, but the asphalt within... But the asphalt within those wards are down in the 50s. So the main reason I'm coming before you today, we usually put these contracts out for bid, and we come to you when we're going to award them. But I'm proposing that instead of moving forward with a 25% split per ward, that I'm looking to shift money towards Wards Three and Four to address that disparity that you see on this page with the roadway conditions. Yes, sir.
So from that previous slide, it does show approximately, well, Ward Three has almost twice as amount of streets as any of the wards individually. Is that correct?
Not quite that, but, but it's by far, yeah, you'd have to be, what, 38% or so to be, be double the lowest, but, but a significant amount more miles within Ward, Ward Three, for sure.
So some, since the population of each ward is roughly equal, the density of population in terms of how it relates to streets, I guess what I'm asking, are there streets in Wards Three and Four where there's just very few people living? Or how do you explain this?
Well, the city grew up, as we know, by the river, and population has shifted from some of the older areas of the city over the years to, to some of the newer areas towards the, the West End. So yes, there are areas in Three and Four that don't have quite the population density as exists in Ward One and Two today.
So you talked about shifting some of the resources to Wards Three and Four from One and Two to help close this gap, this disparity. What I'm asking is whether or not we're going to be focusing on streets that are actually being traveled and people live on, or focusing on streets that are just pretty much abandoned in areas that nobody drives on anymore.
We, we do look, look at traffic counts and our determination of what roads to address with street rehab money. So we're, we're looking to, to give the most bang for the buck, so to speak. So we do look at the pavement condition of the road, but then we look at what the traffic volume is on the road, what the population density is. Some, sometimes that doesn't count so much, as the road may be a collector road or, or an arterial, not have as many houses on it, but does have the traffic volume. What we've also tried to do is we do a smaller amount of paving in-house with our Streets and Drainage Department, and I'll show that to y'all on the website where we keep track of the in-house projects. We have a goal of doing at least a block a month with our in-house paving, and we've concentrated that work on some of those roads that don't necessarily have quite as many houses. It's a narrower road, and it might not be worth getting a contractor out there, but we can address it as we can with Streets and Drainage folks in-house.
Bart, would you say that the streets that, that need, they're in the worst shape and need the most rehabs are the ones that have the most traffic on them and the most population?
Well, it just depends. I mean, you've got to look at the age of the road. So as the road ages, it, it will deteriorate over time. But if you have a higher traffic volume, or if you have a higher volume of heavy traffic, then that's going to wear on, on that roadway. But there, there's a number of factors that'll play into how fast that road goes down.
Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Turner.
So Ward Three, that's basically the oldest part of the city, encompasses downtown as well as North End and South End. So it covers a large geographical area. In the older communities, have, we have found that population tends to evaporate and move to other areas, leaving some vacancy, vacant lots, and having less population in those communities. However, those individuals still utilize all the streets of, of Ward Three, regardless of where they live. And those individuals deserve to have their streets maintained and have good services in, in their neighborhoods also. Because it's not an individual base, they didn't cause the decrease in populations in their community. But many times, that's not where a lot of the money was spent, to rehab. Whereas other areas had new streets, newly created streets. The rehab was less needed there because there was ongoing maintenance to make sure that those streets were good conditions and were able to handle the traffic. So just to say the, the population has decreased doesn't take, that doesn't lessen the importance of making sure all of the citizens of our city are able to go home on a surface that will not be destructive to their vehicles. And they should have the same opportunities as anyone in the most exclusive area of our city.
Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Bart, I'm in full support of data-driven decisions. And one thing that's big on this is data-driven, the numbers don't lie. One of my biggest concerns when I'm looking at the PCI rating, and I see Wards Three and Wards Four on average are somewhere around 14% lower when you add it all up. How do we get to the point where it's determined what's considered, what's, what? Does the city determine to give direction on what's asphalt and what's concrete? Or is it private developers that come in and do that? I just want a better understanding of the whole, the whole concept, where I can have a better understanding of it.
Most roads are put in by developers. So if an area is developed, then it's developed per city guideline. So as you know, today, if a developer would come into the city, we would require concrete curb and guttered roads within that subdivision, wherever it is within the city limits. However, those standards were not always in place within the city. So in the older areas of town, those areas were developed, and they had asphalt roads. Well, asphalt now, it could have been shell or, or, you know, whatnot back when, but with open ditches at the time. So what we do is we'll maintain what is there. So if it's an open ditch road, by far, those are asphalt. It, it makes the most sense for those to be asphalt. And if it's concrete curb and gutter, we tend to maintain it concrete curb and gutter. However, that's not always the case, because in a lifespan of a road, it can get to the point where we will fix the underlying concrete road base to make sure it has integrity, and then we'll do an overlay over it and get additional time on that road until we have to, to tear it completely apart like we did in Washington. So there's a number of phases to the road's lifespan, but if it's, if it's been asphalt, it's open ditch, well, we maintain it asphalt going forward.
Yes, sir. I know we're in the early stages of this presentation. I apologize, Bart, this topic is just something that's pretty passionate for me. Mr. Williams, you don't have to answer this question right now, but I actually saw you could be thinking about it throughout the presentation. You know, based upon the condition that our streets are in in the city of Beaumont, with our older wards being in worse conditions, and developers going to develop in Wards One and Wards Two, I just want you to kind of, by the end of it, tell me with some of your experience, what, what's some input that you could think of that we can do to maybe incentivize developers to come in our older wards? I know we have opportunity zones, but I don't know how successful that's been. Councilman Summy probably can speak to that better. But what, what can we do to actually help offset this? Because I'm, I'm very concerned about the state of Wards Three and Wards Four as far as the roads and their conditions.
Councilman Durio?
Bart, when you said, you mentioned you would, you fix the base and then do an asphalt overlay? Is that what's being done on Fourth Street?
Yes, sir. It's been milled off, and we're, we're doing base repairs currently, or the contractors doing base repairs the length of the road. There's also some utility work going on with the sanitary sewer and to address some problems with the storm drain that we found out after our storm drain inspection, the length of that road.
All right, thank you.
So talking to... Well... There we go. It went to sleep. So talking to PCI a little bit, just to, to kind of renew everybody's understanding of where we're at. Even though it's zero to 100, you're really not looking at, you're looking at a fairly narrow range for what streets normally are at. You're not... And so if you look within the, the chart, and I'll see, I'll show you a subsequent page, it goes through the numbers as well. When you get below a 40, down to a zero, that road's basically, you know, gone at that point. It's, it's messed up, asphalt's torn up, you've got base problems on the thing. When you get into the 40 to 50, you can do a mill and overlay on that road, though you, you may have to do a lot of extensive base repairs. You get higher up into 50 to 60, you can do a smaller mill with a thin overlay and restore the road. You get up above a 60, the road is really in pretty good repair at that point. Normally, we would be looking in the 60s, 70s, do crack seal on the road, make sure you're not getting water under, under the surface to erode the base, and, and basically maintain that road. So when we're looking to get in a PCI world, if we're looking to get up close to a 70, I, I realize in the, the educational world, that's passing, in the, in the road world, you're 70 and above, you're, you're in really great shape at, at that point.
Bart, as a comparison, I don't know if you're familiar with 11 and 1,200 blocks of McFadden, but to me, that's a pretty bad stretch of road. Are you familiar with that? And maybe Broadway, you know, a lot of tree root damage, very... What would that be in terms of a PCI rating?
I'd have to go dig back to find, but, well, wait a second, Broadway's on the CIP. Broadway's a 32, average PCI on Broadway. That, that is in the CIP plan.
Okay.
I don't have McFadden, because we don't have that on the, on the CIP. But yeah, pretty, pretty poor. So you can see from this chart, too, 85 to 100 is excellent, 70 to 85, very good, 60 to 70, you're still good. You get under 60, you're starting to get into, to marginal conditions, and you're going to have rougher ride, ride quality. So street rehabilitation Phase Five, we're proposing to do 9.6 centerline miles of roadway. Total estimated engineering for the project would be $5,077,000. And the split we're looking to do by wards, looking at the dollars, is $1,070 in Ward One, $969,000 in Ward Two, $1.61 million in Ward Three, and $1.428 million in Ward Four. And walking through the individual wards, the roads we're proposing to do in Ward One are Anderson Street from French to East Tex, Keith Road from Highway 105 to 4,675 feet south of Highway 105. The reason for that is Keith Road transitions from us to the county along the length of that. So we're addressing the portion that's ours. San Els, San Els and Selmo Street, guest to Willis, San Bruno Street, guest to Griffin Road. Then Ward Two, we're looking to do Bradford from McLean to Coburn, Coburn from Eldridge to Calder, Masterson from North End to Coburn, Carnahan Place from Forest Park to South End, Potter Drive from Masterson to South End, Blanton Place from Forest Park Drive to South End, and Forest Park Drive, Eldridge to Potter. And Phase Five in Ward Three, and you're going to see Angelina in Ward Three and Four. So Angelina Street from Fourth to Seventh, and then Trotman from Concord to Allen, Birmingham, Fillmore to Buchanan, Bethlehem, Taylor to Johnson, Buchanan, Buffalo to Bethlehem, Pollard, Pine to East, Maple from Pine to Magnolia, I believe that was one of the streets that the citizen came and spoke about in comments earlier. Cottonwood, Gulf to Pine, and Spruce, Magnolia to Pine. And then Ward Four, University, Adams to Lavaca, Rusk, Jaguar to North Fifth, Angelina Street, Jaguar to Seventh. That's the repeat to continue into Ward Four. Legion, Kenneth to Park, Zavala, Kenneth to Highland, Ogden, Harriet to Woodrow, and Rothwell, Pipkin to Lavaca. And I have a summary of all the streets, centerline miles, estimated costs, PCI for each of the wards on, on a single sheet, which I'll hand out, as well as the map of where the roads are within the wards. While that's going around, I did want to point out the street rehabilitation page. This is a newly rolled out website for the city. But we have our street rehab program on the web, and each of the, the programs under street rehab are listed on this page. If you click on the PDF link, it will give you a list of the roads, and it will give you a status of those roads. If you click on the live map, it will bring up the map of the city. This is for street rehab, and it will show you all the phases of rehab that we've done, back to Phase One. And all of those are color-coded within the city. You can see the green here has been completed. I think most of this is completed at this point. But you can navigate through, find your neighborhood, find what you want to look at. We also list the city forces rehab, which I talked about earlier. So all these roads have been done in-house by city forces. And we also do the same thing for concrete pavement repair and pavement preservation, and have that. So citizens have that information. As soon as we bid the project and award it, that information shows up on this page, and then we track where that progress is with construction, so that everybody knows.
Yes, Councilman Getz?
Do we have enough resources to be able to do this by using outside contractors? And I ask that because I've talked to you before about the length of time it's taken to do some of the projects that are currently ongoing, specifically on Hook Stuff, Jay. And part of the problem I'm being told is that we've only got one contractor that's doing asphalt repair work now here locally. Is that the case still? And if so, what are we going to do to try to get other people to come to the dance? Because, you know, those, a lot of people say, well, our roads are bad, we need to do something. And then when you get in there and start doing something, they say, these repairs are terrible. I wish we wouldn't have ever done anything. So how do we address that?
There is predominantly one vendor that is currently bidding on asphalt projects. They recently absorbed the the other local vendor that had been doing work with us. So at this time, most of the work is being undertaken by the that vendor. The main thing that I see we have is to bundle these projects together like we're doing on the. Street Rehab Phase Five and put larger projects out. That could be more attractive to other companies to possibly come in even from outside the area. And try to avoid having the smaller projects. But other than that, we're kind of, you know, at the mercy of the market.
One other question, of course, this is talking about repair work. I guess all of these are primarily asphalt streets?
What we're doing in this phase that we're talking about today, they're all asphalt.
Okay, so when you have repair work needed for concrete streets. Especially arterial concrete streets. That's not going to be included in this, that's going to be addressed in another manner and finding us in another manner.
It's gonna be a part of these concrete pavement repair projects, which we finished the first two phases. And then next fiscal year, we'll go out for phase three of that.
Okay, so we're not ready to talk about that.
That's a diff, it's within the overall funding, the eight million per year, but it's a different contract.
And I'll just go and say, you know, Phelan, which cuts across. A couple of wards.
It needs some more panel. Heaving that's been going on this summer with the with the heat and we're aware of that and we're looking at doing a number of panels in the next contract on that.
Okay.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
So this phase five, this is already part of the current budget or is this for the next budget?
This is part of the current CIP, we already have the bond money for this.
Okay, and I didn't. See Highland Street on here anywhere.
Highland is part of the CIP. So it hasn't actually been brought up, like we brought up fourth to construction this last time. Highland's still on the list to to be addressed.
Do you, do you remember which year we put it in the five year CIP?
It's twenty five.
Twenty five, okay. I know we split it out and actually designated the years under that that five year plan we gave you all, but it's it's not current. And and I do, the roads you're gonna see, the named roads in the in the CIP are the ones that need full reconstruction. They need a lot of base repairs, they need that storm drain inspection like we did down fourth. And that and the dollar amounts are higher.
That's not like, that's not part of this.
Correct, cuz cuz they're just larger projects.
Bart, for phase five, the the numbers, and I know the the wards you presented to us, but what was that total dollar amount between those four with phase five?
Five million seventy seven thousand is the estimate.
Okay, and I know the, and just so I'm following you correctly, that excess two million that's left over from the eight million that's budgeted? What 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 are we doing with that?
Well, let's go back, remember the the first slide I showed you, it had a number of different projects. We've been eating away at that eight million already. So with a pavement preservation contract that we're working on now, the the previous concrete. Pavement repair, the pavement marking contracts, all of that comes out of that eight million. We're we're scheduled to spend the whole eight million in the fiscal year.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure with our road conditions, we definitely exercise the full amount, so.
We want to spend everything, y'all authorized.
Thank you, thank you, and my next question is. And this kind of for overall staff, have we looked at like sized cities, road budgets that's similar to our size? The eight million, the eight million dollar plan, is that kind of standard or we kind of above pace from other cities similar to our size?
Well, that's part of why we contracted with a firm to come in and assess our roads. Because every city's different in terms of where their roads are and what condition they're in. How old they are, what your geo geological conditions are in your area. So they they look at all of those factors and that's how they're, that vendor's giving us that eight million dollar recommendation. We got them to drive the roads again this fiscal year and we're waiting on their report. To come back and give us an update on where our roads are since twenty nineteen.
Okay, Bart, so before this company came in and gave the assessment and we did the eight million, what were y'all doing as a road budget prior to?
Well, I think we were doing, before we started street rehab phase one, I believe it was predominantly done in house with some outside contractor work. And I don't know what the total was on that, but it was substantially less. I know that I wasn't public works director at the time, but I remember the conversation in council. I believe we were spending more around two to three million a year on roads before we upped it. Odwin probably can remember that conversation as well back then.
Well, I want to compliment Councilman Samuel Getz, the ones who are already on council, because that's a pretty proactive approach to get to this number. To kind of catch us up compared to what we were doing, so I just wanted to say that.
We we appreciate the.
And staff too for even the assessment and bringing it to council, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Samuel.
Well, that, thank you, Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tim, to be.
It's Mayor Pro Tim Eley.
This, I I want to commend Todd and Bart. You've made this job a lot. Less complicated over the years. I recall when we went out, had the assessments. And we fell far, far short of where we needed to be. We fell short of other cities our size. But back then, we made a decision to do better. Be efficient in using the funds that we had so that we could continue to make progress. It's being seen now. And because of. Our staff using objective criteria to make decisions. It's eliminated much of the ward politics and fighting. Because you present it in a clear concise way that it's understood. And now we're able to see the benefits of the approaches that have been made thus far. And for that, I say thank you. And I commend you on what you're doing. And because it's, there were times that. To argue about wards. It was not equitable because the populations weren't quite the same. Age of the city wasn't the same, age of the communities were not the same. Populations of the communities were not the same. But by the criteria that you all use to assess the needs. And the immediate needs versus those that we need to be, have ongoing maintenance for those newer areas. And at the same time, trying to bring about a parity of the communities all over our city. We've made it to a place where we're a lot better than we've ever been. And I say thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I appreciate y'all's time.
Mayor, I'll address Councilmember Turner's question. He had asked me to comment on things developers could do to to help with this process. Developers typically, they only typically don't construct roads, they're constructing subdivisions, if they're putting up houses and that's a part of the. The city's development plan or whatever for them to build that road. And that's typically the only time they're gonna invest in streets. And when they do that, what you really want to do is to hold them accountable when they do build those streets and make sure they're building according to specifications. And get good inspectors out there, but you also want to get a. Good warranty program when they build those streets and make sure that there's enough years on your warranty to where the city won't have to come in and invest a lot of money quickly. Back into those streets. Depends on where you are, how long their warranties typically is only a couple of years. I'm not sure what the warranty we require here when a new street's built and by developer. One year, one year, okay, we might consider going to two. To do that, but you know, it's it's just listening, going back way. Back in my career to where I was a public works director. We 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 have a sound street rehabilitation program like Councilmember Samuel said, I think we have a good one. You're putting good money into the streets, into the, to one of your main assets. You know, streets, water, sewer, those are your your main thing, things you have to do, not so much that you, that that's. A pleasure to do, so it seems to be okay. So you know, asphalt versus concrete, you seem to have your pavement PCI index was higher on your concrete streets. And as Bart said, a lot of it's due to soil, geological conditions and that's determines what type of street you're gonna build. In a city and area mostly. There was a time asphalt streets were more economical to build, but you know, but as as fuel prices. Changed, so that changed the price of asphalt and asphalt streets. But in old neighborhood, elder neighborhoods, a lot of the time it's good to, or better to do an asphalt street. Because you can do it at a. You can do more things, it takes less construction. Now, streets are part of your drainage system too. They're a very key part of your drainage system. So you've got to make sure what you do, you do, make sure your drainage is correct, because otherwise it's going to impact your street. It's going to destroy your street, the water's gonna get in the base of it, destroy the base of it, and the street's no stronger than the base, the foundation. So whatever you do, we have to make sure that we're doing good drainage work in those areas when we're working on streets and getting things done with streets. You know, we talked about some things that council, I don't, didn't seem to want, like road maintenance fees and things like that. That would help to pay was reconstruction and repairing the streets. And so I I was reluctant to bring that up, but you're proud of it, it sounds like. But you know, asphalt versus concrete, you know, I'm first time I probably get booed in this city, but I like asphalt streets. I think you can do a lot with asphalt streets. They're smoother to ride on, they're easier to maintain, typically a chip in the bill. And much easier to repair if you have a water leak or or cut across it. But people, they have a stigma to them, but I think they're they're really good sound streets when they're constructed with the right specifications. So what developers, just hold them accountable and get good warranties.
Anything else from council, otherwise we're closing the work session. Okay, now's the second time that's allowed for any citizen who wishes to speak. At this point, you should have signed up for public comments at the kiosk. The city clerk will call your name. When you come forward, please, when you approach the podium, say your, state your city and state. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. And the green light will come on when it begins and red light will come on when your time is up.
I have no one at this time, mayor.
Okay. Well, we're gonna start over with Councilman Durio.
I went first last time, you picking on me? It's okay.
Councilman Neil passed, so.
I just want to say. There was a great event out of Terrell Park this past weekend, Million Men for Christ, unity in the community, very well attended. And I actually received a letter of appreciation, as did Councilman Turner, the mayor, and Pastor Sharp, congratulations Pastor Sharp. And I actually just came at the end, I had to attend a family reunion in Louisiana. But it was really great to have someone in the community acknowledging positive. Things that happened in our community other than, I know a lot of folks, it's a lot of negative that people acknowledge out there. So that was a, that was a real positive event, very well attended. I want to thank Will Landry for doing that and that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Getz.
No comment, mayor.
Councilman Turner.
Yes, I do have comments. I'm still concerned about the feeder roads. Off the freeways, I got a citizen who called me about right by Ebenezer Church. Is that Ebenezer over there in the north end by downtown?
Mount Gilead.
Mount Gilead. Mount Gilead, that that pothole that was on the feeder road has got larger and someone else had another flat right there. I understand that's Tech Dot's responsibility, but the citizens, they're gonna keep calling us and I I know it's a lot, but. Maybe we need to get Tech Dot in on a meeting because man, I get called consistently about those feeder roads. And also RFD and one oh five, I know previously we did a traffic study. And I just wanted to know if that traffic study factored in the new growth with those apartments that are going up. Like going up right and left and a lot of those citizens who live in that RFD neighborhood, they call a lot because they have a hard time getting out. I also got some compliments on the website, so Lauren, I want to let you know, citizens called me and said the website look amazing. They say it's easy to access and it's modern, so they wanted to say, they called me, gave me some compliments, I wanted to let you know publicly. And lastly, Mr. Williams was coming to the end with budget season and he was working with myself, Councilmember Getz, on nightlife task force. And we all, we got all the nightclubs and bar owners to come together and come with some proposals. We got all the police department to listen to some of those proposals and see what they could come up with and how we can meet in the middle and help one another. Because one thing about nightlife is we all see on the news, we all see all the time, it's becoming dangerous. And instead of letting it become worse, it's best to get proactive and get ahead of it and see how we can work together to solve it. So that meeting is gonna come up soon, I know we just finished budget season, I'll be getting with everybody, getting them to the table. Once we come up with something, hopefully we could bring something to the entire council and see what we could come up with. But I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you to the Beaumont Police Department, thank you, Councilmember Getz. And the club owners and bar owners for even taking the time out to try to come with solutions to some of the problems we have in. Beaumont's median age is thirty three, a young city, we have a college here. Unfortunately, we're gonna, we're gonna have nightclubs, so we just got to figure out how to have them and keep everybody safe at the same time, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you got a city attorney too, you were very involved in it, I'm sorry, Ms. Reed.
Councilman Samuel.
Okay, that was something that I wanted to bring up, but I missed it, it slipped. So but at the same time, I will say, do we have an update on Magnolia Pool situation?
Yes, Councilmember, thank you, thank you for bringing, and first of all, I'd like to. Thank you for your patience in that situation, Councilmember Samuel, I know it's. It's not an easy task for that to happen, especially when that's in your ward. So, but not only you, but the people of Beaumont that that impacted, but we do have an impact. We're glad to say that Magnolia Pool will open tomorrow, Wednesday. It'll be opening tomorrow, but then on Saturday, on Saturday, we're going to have a special opening event. On Saturday from twelve to four P M, we're gonna have. I don't know what it's called, special event. Grand reopening, okay, that sounds good, Chris, well, we're gonna have some music, snow cones, treats for kids and an event there at the park. It's a celebration for for opening, so I encourage all of you to be there and be a part of that celebration for the park. Out there as we go through that. Also, Will, for Magnolia Park, we're going to exercise extended hours this year. We're gonna keep it open through September on weekends. So we're gonna give them more of an opportunity to swim and and play and at the park for sure for that. Again, that's, it was a challenge for us. But due to safety, ADA concerns and others, I think this is something that enhances the quality of life in Beaumont. That's what we want to do, start enhancing the quality of life where people. in Beaumont. That's what we want to do, start enhancing the quality of life where people don't have to settle for certain things, you know, get the and have the quality facilities that they deserve and feel safe where they can work and play.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I truly appreciate it. I'm acquiring a better taste for honey these days than vinegar. Because I've been through periods in which staff or employees were not happy with the way things were going. And the citizens weren't happy with the results of what was happening. But it is pleasing to see staff working together and working with the citizens of the community. It makes it a lot easier for us to sit back and say, well, even though I'm just a council member, I don't run the city. I can't make things happen. It's not so much of making things happen, but when we have staff that responds to our concerns and respond to the concerns of the citizens, it makes our job a whole lot easier. So I just say thank you. And we've had, I've been through quite a few city managers and I've seen quite a few mayors and quite a few council members. But it is joyful to see a team coming together, working toward a common goal for the masses of our citizens. And it makes it a lot better place to be. And we are seeing a lot of the results of that now because this council does work together. So we still have problems. We still have issues that is going to come up that's going to need concern. But at least we're ready for that and we'll continue to serve. So I say thank you. And I tell you, you're a hard act to follow, mayor. When you're running for office, it's pretty expected to see you everywhere doing a bunch of stuff. But you, you, you're a different person. You've convinced me that you care about all of Beaumont. And that makes a difference. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. And with our new technology, we want to make sure that we are not missing anybody. And I understand that there might have been an oversight with our kiosk. So we're going to open the floor back up before we continue?
Yes, we did. I apologize, Ms. Adams. Helenaya Adams, she did sign up, but for some reason, she did not come across on my laptop. Can we turn her mic on? He's got her.
No, no.
Nope.
No, it was.
Okay, once again, there we go. Good afternoon, esteemed mayor, council and city staff. My name is Helenaya Adams, and I am here to express my concern about the quality of work performed by a contracting company that was hired by the city. As a concerned citizen, I've witnessed firsthand the effects of subpar work, which includes the deterioration of the foundation of my home. The damage has resulted in costly out of pocket repairs for my mother, grave inconvenience and frustration for my family. I am kindly requesting that urgent action to hold these contractors accountable for their negligence, particularly concerning aging and disabled residents in our community. One potential solution could be to enforce stricter guidelines for contractors before they receive payment. These measures would include mandatory inspections and assessments of the quality of work performed and penalties for contractors who fail to meet the mandated standards. I believe by doing so, we can promote accountability and ensure quality workmanship, which ultimately prevents future instances of poor craftsmanship and making our city a better place. As I conclude, I would like to thank you for your time and your attention to this matter. I trust that you will address it with the seriousness and the urgency it deserves. I remain confident that collectively we can implement a satisfactory solution to this pressing issue. Thank you. Can you, can you give your, your address for the reference? My address is 4610 Galveston Street, Beaumont, Texas, 77703. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The city attorney?
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to say happy birthday to Councilman Getz and congratulations to Councilman Turner on becoming Mayor Protem-elect. That's why he matched me. It's his birthday. But also, there have been several comments from citizens at the podium requesting that the city release a video in connection with Mr. Shaw's case. I wanted, for point of clarification, to point out that the city does not own or operate any jail facilities or any footage that the jail has in their custody. The city doesn't have access to. I just wanted to put that out as a point of clarity for the citizens who've been speaking on that item.
Thank you. Public Works Director?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll report the pothole by Mount Gilead. I would again emphasize to citizens that this construction process on I-10 is going to be a long one. And the contractors that Tech Dot has engaged are responsible for maintaining the feet of roads. That particular section would just be Tech Dot, but, but the part on Cardinal Drive and then when they bid out East Tex will be the contractors with the heavy construction equipment. There'll probably be some issues, but they should reach out to Tech Dot directly to avoid any delay in Tech Dot addressing their concerns. And RFD and 105 is Tech Dot's road. That's a state highway. So we've continued to work with them on that area. They're well aware that the traffic volumes are high and people are frustrated with that particular intersection.
Assistant city manager, Ben?
Nothing. Thank you, mayor.
Assistant city manager, Alice?
Yeah, my comment is a happy birthday to Councilmember Getz.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Getz, and congratulations, Mayor Protem-elect.
City manager?
Yes, mayor. Before you, you have a flyer here that talks about a survey where you can text scan and vote on options for the time for the council meetings. We're actively seeking input from the community out there. So we encourage everybody to weigh in. We're looking at other ways to gain information too. So you'll start seeing more surveys for the public to get information. As I was telling staff this week, we often think we know what the public wants, but it's good to hear from them what they actually want. So we want to be able to identify those as we do projects going into the future. Budget, Councilmember Turner mentioned budget. We still have some tough work to go on the budget. I wish we were finished, Councilmember. I really wish we were finished, but we still have some work to go on there. We've been working hard. Todd and his staff have been really going through the hard work of making sausage with the budget. So we're getting there and we'll look forward to the meeting with council on August 8. Tomorrow, there's a meeting. The State Broadband Development Office will be in the area to get input on broadband in the state of Texas. And I'm going to go attend that meeting and provide some feedback. It's important that we weigh in on that. That's been a priority of the governor and, and the state legislature for the last two sessions. So I'm going to be look, going over there and providing feedback, mayor, to them. If anybody has anything they like to, for us to share or submit written feedback, please provide it to me. Let's see, happy birthday, Councilmember Getz. When you're like me, you don't count them every year, but we count them every other year, but happy birthday. And Councilmember Turner, congratulations on your mayor protem. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Durio, you had something else?
Yeah. Happy birthday, Mike. Congratulations, AJ. I'm sure you do a good job. Not as good as me, but I'm here for you if you need me, brother. But I also want to say, I've been noticing on the news media reports about human trafficking in the Beaumont area. And I was wondering if we could get some type of report or update from staff on that subject.
Thank you for that, Councilmember. And you sent that question to me today and I've provided it to Chief Singleterre and Chief Plonket, and they're going to get that information. I'll be sharing it with city council.
All right. And happy birthday, Councilman Getz. And sorry I hadn't been on social media today to notice that, but I will be noticing that. And Councilman Samuel's going to have a chance here.
Ah, happy birthday, Mike. I mean, Councilman Getz.
Well, as things wrap up here, I certainly want to give a shout out to our communications department. The flyer is excellent. And as we can see, I think having the, the council recognizing last year to bring a communication department on to be able to communicate more effectively with the information that all the city departments do and able to make it easier to interact with. Oftentimes, information exists, but if you can't find it or it's not easy. And our city communication is doing a great job again. And as the city manager pointed out, I believe this is also on the website and which we'll be able to take a poll. And we certainly invite participation from all the citizens. And also, there, there's an opportunity, I believe, to be able to share that onto social media. And so that if you're on social media, be able to, besides voting, also encourage your friends or acquaintances that are on social media with you to do that as well. And I know last week I had the privilege of going to Round Rock for the Texas Municipal League newly elected officials. And it was very informative, the day and a half I spent there. And also, it pointed out that how fortunate we are here in Beaumont to have such a wonderful staff. Because, you know, there are many cities, you forget that when you're in Beaumont that are much smaller and don't have the staff and the council is trying to navigate through waters that they, they trip up on. And then also having on staff city attorney as well as city manager, it makes things go smoother and we're able to be more effective. And certainly our, our council up here in terms of how well everybody works together, it's, it's certainly been first two and a half months. It's been a real pleasure to be here. And I'm thankful for that. And I've been listening to Councilman Turner speak of the median age. I think it is now 34 because it may have gone up a year since the first time he said it. But I mean, I'm not, I'm not fact checking. So I know I've gotten a year older, but meeting adjourned.